All right, everybody here on the air. I don't know much. All right, good evening, everybody. This is the zoning board of adjustment reorganizational meeting and hearing for February 6, 2024, and we are starting at 7:35 PM. Call to order and statement of compliance. Adequate notice of this meeting or hearing has been provided by posting a copy of the public meeting hearing dates on the municipal bulletin board, by sending a copy to the echo sentinel, and by filing a copy with the municipal clerk. Standard board procedures. Any meeting or hearing conducted by the board is a quasi judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and quorum appropriate to a judicial hearing, meeting or hearing must be maintained at all times. Meeting cut off. Announcement is made that as a matter of procedure, it is the intention of the zoning board of adjustment not to continue any matter past 10:30 PM at any regular or special meeting or hearing of the board unless a motion is passed by the members then present to extend the meeting or hearing to a later specified cutoff time. Electronic devices. All in attendance are asked to mute cell phones or any electronic devices so as not to interrupt the proceedings. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First item of business tonight, we have the new appointees or the reappointees for our board members. We'll start with, and our board attorney, Chris Sobieski, is going to do the oaths. We have tonight Jonathan Rosenberg with a term expiring December 31, 2027. We have Tom Grosskopf with a term expiring December 31, 2027. We have Randall Watts as alternate number one with a term expiring December 31, 2024. And we have Meredith Crawford Collins as alternate number two with a term expiring December 31, 2025.
Okay.
You have all the oaths there.
Yes, I do. Just as a note on Mr. Watts, there's a slight typo. It said alternate number two. He's alternate number one, so I just crossed that.
Oh, okay.
Is there anybody we're missing out of that group of four? I think everybody's here, no?
Everybody's here.
All right, great. Now, we can do, we'll do a mass swearing, as I like to call it, instead of having to do all you guys one by one. So if you would, please, why don't you stand up? Raise your right hands if you would, please, and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Jonathan Rosenberg.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States
Of the United States.
And the state of New Jersey
And the state of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States
And the governments established in the United States.
And in this state
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
Perform all the duties of zoning board of adjustment member
Perform all the duties of zoning board of adjustment member.
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will not use my office
And that I will not use my office.
To grant preferential treatment
To grant preferential treatment.
Nor to seek personal gain
Nor to seek personal gain.
Favor or advantage
Favor or advantage.
Not available to the general public
Not available to the general public.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay. Congratulations, you're all duly sworn. Welcome back, or welcome here for the first time.
Thank you.
So I need to distribute these.
Who's on that side?
Tom.
Tom.
And Randall.
Randall.
Yeah. Mr. Rosenberg, Ms. Collins. I just need you guys to sign, I'll put your addresses, and then I'll notarize everything.
I don't know, Tom, officially, I don't know if you are, since you didn't say your name.
Yeah, well, he did. After he was a wise guy.
You know, technically, the speech doesn't really count, it's signing the documents.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, the speech is just
It's just a ceremony.
All right, roll call now.
I did that.
Everybody ready for the roll call?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Ronioe is excused this evening. Ms. Brennan.
Here.
Mr. Flatley is excused this evening. Mr. Gurek.
Here.
Mr. Gianakis.
Here.
Mr. Grosskopf.
Here.
Mr. Rosenberg.
Here.
Mr. Watts.
Here.
And Ms. Collins.
Here.
We have a quorum. So now, we will be doing the election of our chairman for the term expiring January 21, 2025. From members of the board, we have motion to elect somebody as chairman.
I move that Edwin Gurek Jr. be chairman of the zoning board of adjustment for the following year, for this current year.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion was Mr. Grosskopf, second was Mr. Rosenberg, right?
Yep.
Any other nominations on the floor? There being none, I'll do a roll call. Mr. Grosskopf?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Gurek?
Yes.
Mr. Gianakis?
Yes.
Mr. Watts?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
You can now take over.
Yes, thank you. Now, can I, I would like to nominate for vice chairman, Tom Grosskopf.
A second.
Any other nominations? Okay, hearing none, I close the nominations.
All right, so that's Chairman Gurek?
Yes.
You made the motion, right?
Yes.
Okay. Chairman Gurek?
Yes.
Ms. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Gianakis?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Watts?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
And Mr. Grosskopf, now Vice Chairman Grosskopf.
Yes.
There you go.
Now Vice Chairman.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your confidence in us. Now, we have, for number 10, we have board appointment resolutions. The board will appoint a board secretary to serve until January 21, 2025, and that is, if you see it, it's on your, in your packet. Be it resolved, the zoning board of adjustment of the township of Long Hill has appointed Debber Coons as the secretary of the zoning board of adjustment until January 21, 2025. The zoning board of adjustment secretary will hold office hours at Town Hall, 915 Valley Road, Gillette, New Jersey, Mondays, Tuesdays, and Thursdays from 8:30 AM to 4:30 PM, Wednesdays from 8:30 AM to 6:30 PM, and Fridays 8:30 AM to 2:30 PM, and will be present at all regular and special meetings, hearings scheduled for the zoning board of adjustment. Do I hear a motion to move that?
So moved.
Here's a second.
Second.
Okay. Roll call.
Vice Chairman Grosskopf?
Yes.
Ms. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Gianakis?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Watts?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Chairman Gurek?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right.
Chairman, you, the next items, number two, three, four, and five, for the other appointments?
Yes.
You can do, like, a roll call vote for all of them?
A group one, yeah, no, I understand. I'm not going to read those, but there was some question on wording that my vice chairman had that I wanted to discuss to figure out if it's even, you know, if it's worthwhile doing something about it. There was the, he had mentioned that in our, yes, in our board appointment resolutions, it says to serve at the pleasure of the board for the term, but yet in their, in the resolution itself, it doesn't say at the pleasure of the board. Does it matter as far as putting the wording? Because I want to make sure that, that it's understood that it's at the pleasure of the board. Can we add that?
I don't believe, I don't believe it does, Mr. Chairman. I think it's kind of understood.
Oh, I, I thought that, but I wanted to make sure that if it says it in one place, we're not eliminating it in the other place that we might want to put it. Like, where'd you want to add that?
It could just be right where it speaks to the period. There's a time period, each of them, there, a little bit.
Oh, anticipated term contract is one year, whereas, or?
Right, for the, like, for the planning itself, one year.
At the pleasure of the board.
You could add that, the pleasure of the zoning board at that point.
Well, that wouldn't
Same thing for all.
That wouldn't disturb anything, I mean.
I don't see it being material one way or another, so I see no issues with
Same thing, the other thing, you could do it here, determine.
Right. Do, what's, what's the, I mean, I don't see an issue to do, I don't see an issue with not doing. I don't see an issue with doing it. It's not going to, it's not going to upset anything.
No, not at all.
What's the consensus of the board? Would it be all right with all the board members if we put, added where appropriate at the pleasure of the board on the resolutions?
No objection here.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay.
No, and where did you want me to add the language?
It says anticipated term of this contract is one year at the pleasure of the board, and whereas, it, so it's the, it's the
The second whereas clause.
Yeah, the second whereas clause, it says the term that, where it ends.
I think the bright view engineering one is a little bit different. It doesn't have that same
Yeah, the attorney one is a little bit different, too.
Well, they say anticipated this contract is one year. They all say, they all have a whereas, it says one year or the date.
Yeah, with the exception was alternate board professionals, unless I'm missing it on the first page.
Just a question, clarification, would we put it in the whereas, or would we put it in the resolved?
Um.
That's what I was thinking, if you wanted to put it in the resolved.
Okay.
Resolved is good.
Yeah, that's fine, too, you can put it at the resolved. I was just
That's kind of standard.
Yeah, you just write a sentence that says that, you know, this
Appointment is at the pleasure of the board.
Yeah, the appointment is
During which time the annual performance
Then put it there, okay. That's, that's even better, thank you. That's why we open it up to discussion, so we get good ideas.
So we get paid the big bucks.
Exactly. So, all right, with that change, we made that change, has everybody had a chance to look over the resolutions for the legal firm, the engineering firm, the planning firm, and any other firm, like the traffic engineer?
I do have a question on the board attorney.
Yes.
I believe that there was a rate schedule, that associates were at a different rate than what just the Warrens getting paid, and clerks, et cetera, back in the original agreement.
Appointment, yeah.
And I don't see such a schedule now. Everybody's paid 175.
Is that, but this says for hearing
That's because this is, this is the basic resolution, so what happens ultimately in the assigned contract, when they come back, we attach that as an exhibit to the contract.
Okay.
Which is the fee schedule.
But predominantly because the fee that majority of what's going to be paid either out of escrow or non-escrow, that we will be using our professionals for, that's the number that goes in the resolution. It's the highest number.
Right. I think it, I think it's incorporated by reference to the paragraph number one on page two, professional services contract with Stephen K. Warner, et cetera, et cetera. By referring to that services contract, that's probably where
Where that, the rate schedule.
And that's where we put the schedule in.
Fine, that's good, as long as we have an explanation. All right, so, hearing that we, any other questions about those appointments of the wording of their resolution? So, hearing none, do I hear a motion to move the resolutions for the legal firm, the engineering firm, the planning firm, and the board will appoint any traffic engineer or any other firms? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Okay.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All right, roll call.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Grosskopf?
Yes.
Ms. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Gianakis?
Yes.
Mr. Watts?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Chairman Gurek?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you, board.
You're welcome.
Exactly. Thank you from our end, too. Appreciate the comments.
You're never getting rid of us.
No.
That's what I tell her.
I know.
You can't leave.
But she didn't ask for plans, so.
Board, yes, congratulations on that.
I think everybody should give a clap.
No.
That was a big accomplishment. At our dinner in December, they mentioned that, or January, they mentioned that, that was finally done after all these years. That's a big accomplishment.
Are you ready to start the next one?
Yeah.
Never-ending battle.
Yeah, well, as soon as you get that one, you've got to start the next one, right?
It took 30 years to
Board procedural resolutions.
Purple housing round.
Did any, everybody get a chance to look at the 2024 minute in hearing schedule, the notice of publication, the resolutions for applications, and the meeting and hearing cutoff?
Yes.
Okay. Any
And I will, Mr. Chairman, I will note that you and I had discussed this, that we thought it was a good idea unless anybody else on the board says otherwise. Because this is a presidential year, we are not, we often not do, put a second meeting or have that first Tuesday in the month of November this year.
Yes.
Kind of collectively in the last several years, when there have been elections, and we've had board, like, board hearings the same night, it gets very tricky.
It does.
So, I think unless we have to add that date as a
As a special
Oh, my God, special hearing, you know, we need to add it, my suggestion would be to not have
Yeah, I would concur. As being a poll worker, I would concur, because I have, unless I'm working here, which I'm usually not, it's, I have to run here. Anyway, so, hearing no other changes to those six, seven, eight, nine, do I hear a motion to accept those?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Do we need a roll call?
No, no, this thing's coming on.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Meeting minutes for December 5. I was not here, but do you hear, everybody got a copy of them? Are there any changes, amendments to the minutes? No? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to accept the December 5 minutes?
So moved.
Second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All right, the, you want to call the roll call for the people?
No, we can have, for all in favor
Of all the people that are allowed to vote, which is not me and not Randall
Grosskopf, Gianakis, Rosenberg, that's it.
Right, okay. Among those, say yes.
Yes.
Okay, good. All right. Meeting minutes upon motion made in second in the meeting, okay. Then we've got the resolution, Rachel and Adriana Rihanna, application number 23-02Z. That one is the River Road one. Did every, the people that were at that meeting, did they all, you guys all looked at it? Is there any changes or amendments to that resolution? Anything that struck somebody as weird, or wrong, or corrected? None? Okay. All right, good, no typos, nothing, that's good. All right.
I'm shocked.
Yeah?
I wrote it.
So, that's good, that's good. Yeah, there's always some.
I'm sure there's
Okay, do I hear a motion?
I'm not going to bother looking for it.
Do I hear a motion?
We can review it again.
Do I hear a motion to move that?
So moved.
Yeah, you all hear a second?
Second.
Okay. All right.
Vice Chairman Grosskopf?
Yes.
Mr. Gianakis?
Yes.
And Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, terrific. All right, now, board secretary report.
Oh, no, that's after. Now we have the
Oh, that's, okay. Well, fine, okay. Is that going to be long?
No, I mean, I can just tell you, like, I
Yeah, because I won't be here for the application, I'm not coming back to the report.
Oh, that's right. Basically, I wanted to have another update, but I know we have at least five other applications coming in, so I haven't updated the status sheet as of the last update I sent out in January, so.
Okay.
But surprise, we're busy.
Yeah, yeah, we're going to be busy.
This is good, yay.
So clear your Tuesdays.
Clear your Tuesdays, that's right.
Now, the application that's coming up is a bulk variance for block 13003, lot 8, zone R-3, known as 424 Elm Street, application number 23-16Z, La Dignia and Milton Duarte. Applicant proposes to construct a second-story addition to an existing single-family residence. Is the applicant present? Yes, I see him present, and we have the expert here. Do you have any other witnesses besides yourself?
No.
Okay. All right, well, it just so happens that I own a piece of property that is behind to the left of this property, and unfortunately, I have to recuse myself. I would love to sit on this, I, I, really, it saddens me that I actually can't do it, but it's one of the first times I've actually had to recuse myself. So, with that said, I will turn over the meeting to my trusty vice chairman and let him proceed, and I will take my leave. So I get home early tonight. All right, guys.
You better call your wife so she can throw your book
Exactly, right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Mr. Vice Chairman, while Mr. Chairman is leaving, just real quick, I'd just make my statement as to jurisdiction here. I did have an opportunity to review the applicant's notice, found both the content and timeliness of service to be sufficient, was sent by certified mail and published in the Moorestown Daily Record more than 10 days in advance of tonight's hearing, and thus, in my legal opinion, the board is jurisdiction over this matter, so just want to put that on the record.
Before I leave, there is a Somerset County Bar Association land symposium and basic course in land use law that I would recommend that everybody go to. I've gone to it for the past two years. Deborah will talk to you more about, it's in, when is it? Sometime in
I don't know the date. I'll send everybody
But it's a really good course, and it's an interesting, it's not a waste of time to go to it, it's very interesting, so I would recommend everybody do that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Carry on.
Wait, wait, son. Take care.
Have a good night. Take care. You want to take the big seat?
No. My diapers fit here. All right, can, I guess we'll go to our board professional first?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, or Mr. Vice Chairman, I guess I'll swear the witnesses and we'll do that first. Gentlemen, if you could, I'm assuming both of you are going to be testifying, correct?
Correct.
Okay, you both raise your right hand. Do you, and Ms. Lahini as well, I got you, too, might as well, everybody. Do all of you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God?
I do.
All right, great, thank you very much. Mr. Chairman?
Okay. Ms. Lahini, can we hear from you?
Do you want to hear?
Oh, yes, they're opening. Sorry.
My name's Milton Duarte.
I'm sorry, please proceed. If you could just identify yourself, name and address for the record.
My name's Milton Duarte, 424 Elm Street Sterling, and then, reason I did the application, I like to make my house more comfortable for us. We plan to stay here longer, and family growing. We, I have a big family here, too, my brother lives in Millington, and then, we all get together holidays, birthday, you know, party, and then, I like to do that, for make comfortable for our family. And then I like to introduce my architect, he can explain you guys better, what plan, his name, Tom Ellenberger, you can explain to me.
Hi, everybody, Tom Ellenberger, Walnut Design
Mr. Ellenberger, if you could just, microphone.
Closer?
Yeah.
Better?
Unfortunately, the battery's dying.
Oh.
It's blinking.
Should we share?
Designed yesterday.
We could share.
Yeah.
How's this? Tom Ellenberger, Walnut Design, Ford Walnut Avenue, Sterling. I'm a licensed architect, licensed in New Jersey since 2002. My license is currently active, and I have appeared in front of this board once prior in the last 18 months.
And I think, Mr. Vice Chairman, does the board accept him as an expert witness? In the field of architecture, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And your license is in good standing?
In New Jersey, in good standing, yes.
Yeah, we accept you.
Okay.
So, the property that we're looking at is, it's currently a one-and-a-half-story split-level home. Milton and his family's intention is to expand the living area on the first floor and expand the second-floor bedroom. We're not increasing number of bedrooms, number of bathrooms, anything along of that nature. The current house does have a problem with a low-pitched roof, so ultimately, the second floor will become a full second story rather than really a half-story of what it is now, so the ridge height, it'll get a little bit higher in ridge height, but nowhere near the maximum allowable by zoning.
Mr. Ellenberger, I'm very sorry to cut you off, sir.
No problem.
I see you're kind of glancing over at the plans, I just want to confirm, those were submitted with the application more than 10 days in advance?
Those are, yeah, I have two, I have three plans with me. The two, the first two are identical, that was submitted.
Okay.
And I will address a third one, which I will enter as an exhibit.
Okay, yeah, we'll take it as it comes. Okay. Just wanted to confirm. Thank you.
I'm looking at it because it's, right. Putting it in my mind.
I got you.
So, the additions will technically be a two-story addition, five feet, it will add five feet in width to the house, as well as five feet to the back of the house. And that'll accommodate the larger living area on the first floor and make a more practical master suite up on the second floor. So the variances we're seeking, ultimately, most of them are triggered in result of a lot size that is existing non-conforming. It is narrow and not of the square footage in, dictated for the zone. So there's lot coverage and side yard and a few other ones that are up here. Can I take this up here to the drawing, or can I sit?
If you could.
Or this.
This one good? There you go.
My eyes aren't that good. So, you know, the variance they're seeking is ultimately a result of the property size. I'm going to go to a exhibit that we'll enter, which is a blow-up of the aerial map that is on the first sheet. And this is just, it's a blow-up from the tax map, but what I highlighted here are the lot widths in the block area, the yellow indicating the property in question. And of the seventeen properties that are on the block, only two of which actually meet the lot width that is in the zoning. Those two also meet the lot area requirement, and the rest of them that are in red do not meet it as well.
All right, Mr. Ellenberger, just want to establish, this is Exhibit A-one. We'll call this aerial blow-up.
Yep, that's fine.
On sheet one. We'll date it today, two-six-twenty-four.
Two-six-twenty-four.
It's okay with you unless there's another date on there.
No.
Okay. Great, thank you.
A-one, you said?
Yes, sir.
Great. So I just wanted, now again, this is publicly available. I obtained it off of the county website. I am not a planner, so I'm just really kind of extrapolating data that was available. But ultimately, the variances that you're seeking are really a result of the insufficient lot size and width. So what we're proposing is two-story addition over the main house. The mass of the dwelling, really, it's, obviously, the height is getting a little higher, but ultimately, it's not drastically changing the street front. Cleans it up a little bit, but proportionally, it's, you know, it's very fitting to the neighborhood. With new roof, new siding, windows, you know, in the disturbed areas. And technically, you know, the front, basically, you know, the big change is really in the roof, you know, the roof and the overall mass just get a little bit larger. As you could see from some of the photographs, you could see how the original house is. There were some comments that maybe we can go through from engineering report and planning report. If, do you want to address questions first, or go through comments?
It's ultimately your presentation.
Oh, okay. I'm easy. So, yeah, we'll go through the, some of the comments. Very good comments. On the planning reports, Elizabeth, thank you. So hopefully, in item one, as far as the bulk variance, with the exhibit that I presented presents a somewhat of a hardship as far as him using the lot appropriately. Hopefully, I addressed that with that presentation. Does anybody want to comment directly on that, or can I move on? Item number two, the swimming pool. So Milton, the swimming pool was installed.
Two years ago? Two years ago.
Two years ago, under permits, above-ground swimming pool, fence around the.
Swimming pool. I just have that and from the stats, because it's fifty-four inches high, it's not required.
Okay. The breakdown of the calculated coverage. So when I calculated the lot coverage, obviously, building structures, but I included the pool and the patio, walkways, everything to come up with that calculation as worst-case scenario. I saw the definition in the zoning that a pool is included. I wasn't sure about it, above-ground versus built-in, but I included it in the number. And.
Sorry, if I can ask, did you include the shed?
Yes.
You did?
Yeah, everything, yeah.
All right, good.
Yeah, I included the worst-case scenario. And yes, guilty for spelling errors.
Yep.
Standard protocol.
Any reservations about just correcting that as a condition of approval?
Correcting.
The spelling.
Of course.
Just making sure.
No guarantees I'll get it right the second time, but I'll try my best.
You were consistent.
Hey, yeah, nothing else. Got to give him that.
Maybe he's talking about the font. I don't know. You know what? I hate to say, but the spell check, that's what it picked up. And
It happens.
It's not the first time it's happened. If we move on to the engineering report, so the, there is an existing patio in the back that has, that's bound on the rear with a low retaining wall. So for all intents and purposes, that retaining wall is not going to be modified. The addition will push the back wall out five feet, and the retaining wall is going to essentially remain. It's going to, they still terminate at the back of the house. There's a wood deck that's, I'm calling it a wood deck because ultimately, it's a landing for stairs that will basically straddle that wall, part ungrade, and then part will be steps going down to the existing patio. So the existing patio is not going to get modified or enlarged. It'll stay the way it is. I'll provide testimony as far as the landscaping buffers. So in the front of the house, there's a mulch bed with a couple azaleas and flowers in front. What we'd like to do is just kind of extend that to the new corner of the house. I can get up and show you, but basically, the planting bed currently terminates at the existing corner of the house, and we're just going to extend it and provide additional shrubs and flowers to match what's there. There is no plantings on the side currently, and the side of which we're seeking variance for, which is this side. It's only grass from here to the property line existing. And we were going to propose to leave it that way. No grading is proposed. No grading changes proposed as part of this work.
Okay.
Stormwater management, yeah, we are under the threshold requirement for that. So as far as drainage, existing, all the leaders find their way to daylight currently, and with what we propose for the addition is to basically just extend that. The leaders that are on the east side of the house currently just splash onto grade in this corner and this corner, and with the five-foot addition, they will do the same thing. The two leaders on this side of the house, actually, they go underground just to reach beyond the patio, and then they hit daylight. So they're going to do the same thing as well. It's just a matter of just getting under the patio, and this is already underneath the driveway, and it travels westwardly to daylight. So essentially, we're just kind of adapting the leaders to the existing of what's there.
Can I ask a question while you're speaking about that?
Certainly.
So what is the grade from the eastern side of the house towards the eastern property line now? What is it like? Is it flat? Is it sloped? Is it?
It's, there's a slight slope. Can you, do you know about how much?
Away from the house, I would imagine.
From, you're saying from, Milton, from this side to?
No, the eastern.
Of the eastern side to, to west?
No.
Oh, to the front?
Eastern to east.
House to east property line. Does it go down or?
You're putting the drainage five feet closer to the property line on the east.
Yes, correct, correct.
My question is, what do we have, twenty feet there now, or?
We have twenty-five going to twenty.
Right. So that twenty feet in between this house and the property line, is it sloped that way?
That slope towards me.
Really?
Yep.
Okay. Well, right against the foundation, I would hope that it's not.
I think it's, yeah, I think it's slightly sloping away, and then I think as you get to the front, I think it does slope slightly towards the street, correct?
That's correct.
So, but it's not sloping towards the house, Milton, correct?
Right. So that, I mean, that's all we're getting at, or getting towards is, you know, now that if and when you get approved for this, we don't want your five feet, might have soaked up some water to now, you know, kind of not soak up water, and it's rushing over the neighbors. But if the slope is already like that, if it isn't, then, you know, maybe some accommodation to the grade could happen so that you have a squail or something to stop it from going to the neighbors or.
Okay. We could also consider, you know, as far as directionally, have that drain go to the front. Because I do think in the front, even you could look and see in the pictures, it does, from the front.
Water too, right?
They need water.
Yeah. But that's all I was getting at.
Understood.
It is kind of odd looking right now, how it seems to come out and then shut back in. Is that, or is that just a?
In the photo, existing photo right side in A-two.
Existing photo right side.
Actually, both the front and, I think this is the eastern.
Top right picture.
Do they, I mean, maybe it's just the.
I do, I do think it does slope back to front.
It does, right? Even that goes across, and that's through the whole side though, Milton, correct? From the backyard?
Yes.
So it's going across.
Take a lot of curves. I mean, it's hard to tell what direction.
Yeah, it's hard to see from the photograph on the left, you know, does it pitch much towards the property line? I don't think it's much, but it may be slightly. The main pitch is definitely from rear to the front. So.
On the west side, when you say the drains are opens to daylight, is that on the applicant's property?
Yeah, Milton, that's on your, they hit daylight once they get past the driveway, correct?
Correct.
Okay. How far past?
I believe the driveway, about eight feet.
Eight, nine feet?
Something like that. And also between the two property lines, we have that slope because we have water from the back running towards the street.
So there's something there.
Yes, addressed up already.
While we're on drainage, I know Mr. Voight had in his memorandum, request for a condition, if the, if the roof leaders don't maintain the existing drainage areas, would the applicant be willing to stipulate to submitting a drainage statement and some proposed mitigation measures? Would be subject to the review of the board engineer? Cool with that?
Yes, Milton.
Yes.
Of course.
Okay, got it. So that might hopefully address all the board members' concerns if there's an issue, then.
Yeah.
Mr. Voight will figure it out, if you guys.
Okay, fantastic. No issue. Soil erosion, Milton will provide silt fencing around disturbed area.
I'm going to take that as.
That's adequate.
I'll take that as another stipulation.
Yep, absolutely. And then the area disturbance doesn't require the Morris County soil certification. Any questions?
Liz, do you have questions? Why don't you go ahead and?
Okay, I just have a few questions. First, so just with regard to the planning testimony, so you have the, some existing non-conformities with regard to lot size, which is undersized, lot width, which is undersized, and then you have the shed, which I'm assuming, Mr. Duarte, you didn't put in, or did you put in the shed?
I put in the shed.
Okay, so that would be probably, I mean, it's an existing non-conformity, but it probably, maybe you want to make that sort of part of your application now to seek a variance for the setbacks. And it's also, it exceeds the maximum permitted size for a shed.
What's the size of the shed? Ten by ten, it's a ten by twelve?
It's a little, it's a little over a hundred square feet, I think.
Do you know the size of it, Milton?
I think that's ten by fifteen, if I'm not wrong. It's like about a hundred.
Hundred and fifty.
Yeah, a hundred and fifty.
Yeah, so, yes.
They can get a variance.
They would get a variance.
Not have to move it and not have to make it smaller.
Right.
Yeah. We went through that on the left.
Right, exactly. So I just want to make that, that clear. But I think with regard to the zoning, you know, the variances that you need, is it of your opinion that the benefits of granting these variances would outweigh any of the detriments associated with them?
I do.
And do you think that, you know, despite the fact that you need these variances, do you think that what you're proposing here is a, sort of provides a better zoning alternative, you know, with regard to how the building fits in, in the remaining, you know, the streetscape of the neighborhood?
I do.
Okay. So then, the couple of things that I would like to see, the aerial thing is minor, but I would like to see a breakdown of the, of how you got to the impervious coverage calculations. I think that's important, especially because you need a variance for that. The other thing I would say is my, yeah, I don't know this for a fact that what Joe, which was getting at, but my guess is that he was suggesting more than sort of azaleas as landscaping because there is, because the applicant is proposing to go further into a side yard setback towards a neighbor, that the landscaping would be an attempt to mitigate any of those, that's my guess, is that's what he's getting at, is to mitigate any sort of potential negative impacts of getting five feet closer to Mr. Duarte's neighbor. The other thing I would note, and again, but that's for the board's consideration. And then, the other thing I would note is that it looks like the air conditioning condenser, you know, is on that side yard, and that is getting a little bit closer to your neighbors. And so I think that that may be something the board would want to discuss or think about, is whether that would, you would like to see that in some way screened or landscaped, because it is also visible from the street, but again, it's going to be a little bit closer to that, that neighbor. But I think that's, those are my only, yeah.
Liz, I'm sorry to put you on the spot with the AC unit. I had this question. Do they need a variance if they're moving that thing over a little bit? It's not, it would be in the setback.
You have to have ten feet from the property line to the generator.
It is not a generator. There actually are no regulations.
No.
Oh, really?
For HVAC.
Oh, okay.
Was it ten feet for a generator? I'm just curious.
The generator is ten feet, but there's no rule for HVAC.
Really? Okay. All right, well, that answers my question. So that's a no.
Would the applicant be amenable to putting some sort of screening, whether it's vegetation or?
Absolutely.
Vegetation to match, just will kind of wrap the corner further to kind of hide from street and the side, the condensing.
Is it not an option to move it to the back? So that it's not visible from the street?
The AC unit?
Yeah.
Hang on. Point says it's being moved anyway, right?
If you're leaving the wall where it is, you got like a little corner there.
It could get further, it probably could get further to the back, but I don't think I could tuck it behind the house.
Well, in between, from the new edge of the house to the wall, you got five feet. You have a little notch right there that screams, what are you doing?
Yeah. Well, I don't know if it's, well, it is, but I think what happens, there's a, that wood, there's a, really a landing for this, the door that going to the backyard, which, you know, I think you're, you're right where I was thinking, like, that corner's going to help, but I don't think I could get it to tuck around to the back. But we can certainly attempt, you know, do the vegetation.
Good faith, best effort to relocate the air conditioning unit to a. Even if it's not next to their patio, maybe further back.
Further to the back of the house. Okay, no problem.
I mean, we wouldn't want to put it on their patio, right?
Yeah, okay. No, I don't think there's any issue with that, right?
No.
And then just in terms of the screening of the new structure itself, as I'm reading the plans, it's not just coming five feet on the first floor, but it'll also be five feet on the second floor. So.
Correct.
Really no way to screen that. So how many, it's a small property, it feels like too much, to me, anyway.
So maybe just landscaping on the front and not the side?
The front, yeah. I mean, I thought that what he proposed was reasonable, adding in, of course, screening and potentially relocating the air conditioning unit.
Thank you. No problem. So about additional landscape screening for the AC unit itself? Or just moving it back, do you think that's efficient?
Just, just the AC unit, whether it's, I don't know, it's. Just, just the AC unit, whether it's, I don't know, some sort of enclosure, some sort of shrubbery, something.
That's it, okay, no problem, so I understand the, the scope of everything.
There's only one window, uh, in the side of that house remaining, and it's gonna be in the bedroom, there's no window in the living room?
Yes.
Correct, no, no window on that side, currently.
But in the back there's.
In the back.
There's just one window, obviously.
It's, it's the second floor is the, is the window.
On the living room. So it's not like you put a big picture window, the living room did look at the neighbors, like.
Um, Mr. Chair, can I? Okay. Two questions, um, first question on the aerial image, the red dot, that is the house?
That, yeah.
So.
I, it's useless.
Okay, so I'm assuming, though, this is a, a picture taken in the summer, spring sometime, and it appears that, I mean, maybe I'm wrong, it appears it almost is completely covered in, in vegetation, is that not true, or is that just a, that it, just the picture is not?
How, um, how is the property in summer? Is it, is there a full canopy of trees?
Not really, no, we have two trees in the back and one tree in the front.
Yeah, 'cause from, when I look at it here, it doesn't look like that's the picture that they coordinate to each other. It almost looks like you have a full on woods there, that's why I was wondering, but I do see in the front photo to the right, I guess to the east, there are some relatively tall trees, are they in the backyard, between you and the neighbor on the east side?
Yes, I have two in the backyard.
But they don't extend to, towards the, okay. Because I, I guess, to, to your question, you know, about how the height, maybe, you know, I, I, obviously you can't plant full grown trees, but I didn't know if extending those trees, I don't know, are those your trees, or are those your neighbor's trees?
That neighbor's.
Okay.
Actually, it's right on, on the line.
I didn't know if we wanted to consider that, I, I have to ask this question because, especially when Brian was here, he, he would always ask this kind of question, so I figure I have to continue. When you considered doing this project originally, obviously you wanna, you know, in, in, increase the amount of your living space, and, and obviously, you know, be able to use this more appropriately, did you consider the extending on the other sides? You would, because it seems like if you extended it five feet on the other side, instead of on the, in the west side, instead of the east side, you wouldn't have to get a variance for that, correct, I think?
Correct, but that would be in the bedrooms, I know, I'm, you know, increase the bedrooms, because we prefer be in the kitchen and the living room, that's we enjoy more, more family together.
And it would, I mean, I suppose you could reconfigure everything, that it would make it different, but there would more, it would be just more reconfiguring to, to actually get that done?
Yes.
Okay, I figure I have to ask, because that's.
Did you, did you consider any options, or are there any options to achieve what the applicant is seeking to achieve in terms of the space that's within the, the zoning, such that you wouldn't need to get variance?
The only, the only option would be, um, basically pushing everything towards the back, which would then modify the patio completely, um, area disturbance more, you know, so basically, it, you know, thought about it, but I think, um, you know, I think this was, uh, an approach, a path of least disruption or, uh, resistance. But that we did think of trying, you know, doing the back.
It's great to hear that you thought about it.
Try. Can't get all the right answers all the time, but you gotta try.
I, I've got one more question about the interior, just 'cause, you know, as, as Liz pointed out, you know, you're gonna need a variance for the shed, should do it similarly, and I know that these aren't the construction documents, but in the bathrooms, you still have two single sinks, and if there's any, um, thoughts of having double sinks, because these plans, if I'm not mistaken, these plans kind of then go to the construction department, which, so they should kind of be in sync, so if all of a sudden you say, hey, wouldn't it be great to have two sinks, you know, in the bathroom, and, and then you do it in the construction thing, then there's like a disconnect, so just to make sure, if you want two sinks in the master or in the main bath, uh, is that something that you're considering? And you wanna kind of have us approve now, and do we need to, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
We need to approve now, but.
Oh, okay. Oh, right, never mind that.
But you might wanna think about a double.
Yeah, yeah.
No, 'cause they're nice, they're nice large countertops, right?
Yeah, actually, the master suite is, will be a nice suite, so that's certainly not out of the question to do something like that.
And of course, you get taxed for two fixtures, but.
Not if you put it in after the tax man comes by.
Turn to Michael.
I got one more, one more question, just.
Sure.
So on the, on the drawing, it says there's a shed behind the existing.
Existing, so the existing, there's a shed that is, was constructed, um, that abuts to the house.
It, so it's connected to the house?
Yeah, it's connected to the house.
Right there, you're getting rid of it, though.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Was, is that a problem that they have two sheds?
No, 'cause they're getting rid of one.
I know, I mean, right now, obviously, I'm just saying, right now, is that a problem?
It's a, it's a strange shed, I mean, not a strange shed, but it's weird, because it is attached to the house, but I guess it opens up into the patio, it's not in, it's not, there's no opening into the house.
No, it's not, it's not insulated, it's not, it's just like a lean-to up against the house, that they refinished over to make it look, uh, like it's part of the house.
Just wondering.
But it would have been.
Yes.
Randall, any questions? Meredith, you have any questions?
I'm taking it all in.
You're not obliged to have questions. All good. I have one, and Liz, I'm very sorry to put you on the spot again, um, the app, just because the applicant noticed for it, might as well address it, um, a front yard setback variance, they don't need that, right, because they're not building into the front yard setback?
Good, correct, I mean, I, I just, all the existing non-conformities, except the shed, which I, you know, but I think you didn't, um, you haven't made any additions to your house since you've been in it, right? You said you bought it a couple of years ago, so that, so he wasn't, he bought the property with those, those conditions.
Okay, that's, okay, just wanted to confirm they weren't building, they didn't need that relief, so, okay, okay.
Can I, can I ask a question, though, regarding the lot coverage, do you have a problem with their calculation? Do you, do you have another calculation?
No, it was more just, um, it's typical that we see it broken down, because sometimes then the board might try to bargain, you know, like, well, hey, if you got rid of the pool, or what, I don't know what, but, you know, you could lower that, since you need a variance for it. So I think it's good to have, especially if somebody comes back, either Mr. Duarte or somebody at the future, who want, who needs to expand, and then makes it worse, that we have some sort of baseline of how that number was derived. And there's just kind of weird, you know, there's, like, you don't have to count the shed if there's gravel underneath, and like, that, a, a wooden deck is fifty percent, but only if it's slats and stuff like that, so I think it's just good to have that.
And, and the professional testified that he accounted for everything as lot coverage anyway, so potentially, he's over.
A hundred, yeah, that's exactly right, i- i- it's possible that it's not as extreme as they're getting the variance for.
Breakdown.
Yeah.
Actually, I, I do have a question, I'm just looking on the second, um, second page of this, and we have discussed too, by ex, by expanding the property five feet to, to the e, I believe it's five feet to the east, I've noticed in the existing photo rear, and the existing photo right side, there's gutters that have runoff that run eastward, that, that's slight, slightly soaked down, and in the new plans, what you, what you.
I probably don't show it on the plan, actually.
Pardon me?
It's not, it's not indicated on the plan, I realized that, I didn't show the downspouts on the plan.
Correct, and my question was, because you're going to be expanding five feet eastward, do you think with downspouts, you might have those running south? Because it does slope south of front, the front lawn, would they, um, would the front lawn exist southward?
Towards the street?
Yeah.
To go with the natural, yeah, that's what I was thinking when, when the conversation came up, that maybe there's a way to kind of direct the water.
Right.
More towards, you know, front of the house.
Yeah, because I.
I mean, you gotta be digging, right, so we could go underground and then maybe, you know, end up in the yard before the road.
So, so full disclosure, Milton is in the industry, and, um, I think we'll, we'll be impressed with.
Yeah, we can trust that, it's not be a problem.
Very appropriate, so, um.
I drove by your home earlier today, and you have a nice slope to your, your front yard too, so I don't think there would be any issue with that.
By the industry, you mean construction?
Sometimes when people say the industry, they mean, I mean, a lot of different things.
Just in that area, I'll be working for this company for twenty-five years, and then go construction, and then that's pretty much I do all that.
God bless.
And then get to come home and do it.
All the way for himself, okay. And anything else from you guys? No? Public, I don't, I don't think there's anybody there, but.
Open to the public, closed to the public.
Acknowledging, there is no public, okay, I guess I'll try to summarize everything, um, applicant seeking, I count five different variances here, and I'll try to run through them, and as always, if I get anything wrong, or I'm leaving anything out, feel free to jump in. First one is a side yard setback variance for the principal dwelling, uh, twenty-five foot minimum is, uh, I'm sorry, is it, twenty-five foot, uh, is the, uh, minimum required, the maximum required setback, minimum, maximum, minimum, geez, I can't, it's late in the day, guys, I'm sorry. Right. The house is existing at a twenty-five point five one feet, applicant proposes twenty point five one feet, so five foot deviation there. Next variance saw it as lot coverage, this one I know is a twenty percent maximum, uh, property's existing at twenty-three point four percent, applicant proposes twenty-four point three percent, and the last three have to do with the shed, the first one is the size of the shed, applicant proposes in existing, uh, one hundred and fifty square foot shed, where one hundred square feet is the maximum, the shed also would have a side yard setback variance of eight, uh, side yard setback of eight point one feet, where ten feet is required, and rear yard setback of eight point three feet, where also ten feet is required, and I think that's it for variances, am I leaving anything out? No, okay, so that's the scope of variances, uh, possible conditions, and these are in no particular order, but, uh, the applicant did, I will note, stipulate to the conditions that were contained in our board planners' review memorandum, which was dated February second, twenty twenty-four, as well as the conditions in our board engineers' review memorandum, which was dated February fifth, twenty twenty-four, and I'll break those down, uh, I'll start with, uh, with Joe's memo, it's a little bit easier to go through. Um, if there's any change in the roof leaders, uh, such that they won't be maintaining existing, existing drainage, applicant will submit a drainage statement with proposed mitigation measures to the, uh, subject to the review and approval of the board engineer. The applicant will also maintain soil erosion and sediment control measures until, uh, the area of disturbance has been permanently stabilized. I believe the applicant indicated they'd be using silt fencing for that, they'll also make a, uh, I'm sorry, they're, they're gonna revise the architectural plans to correct the spelling of aerial to A E R I A L, and they will also add a lot coverage breakdown on those plans, and, uh, the next one has to do with, uh, air conditioning unit and screening on the side, they're gonna make the, a good faith best effort to move that AC unit on the side of the house to, closer to the rear of the lot, closer to the patio, and additionally, the applicant stipulated to adding additional landscape screening to the front of the dwelling, where the, the addition will be moving further to the east, and also additional landscape screening for the AC unit, and I think that's it, if I'm leaving anything out, please feel free to jump in.
With the landscaping for the AC unit, could that be some sort of like fencing too, does it have to be trees?
Doesn't have to be.
Okay, just call it landscaping, I don't know if that meant natural things or?
If you want it to just be trees or?
You could say, why don't you say screening, and say, make it a combinat, it, it can be a combination of fencing and landscaping.
Or minimal up going on, but we still wanna cover it, I don't know.
Fencing.
Felt like I had to say something.
I got you. Okay, great, and we'll make those subject to the review and approval of our very talented board planner, thank you. And that's, uh, that's the whole enchilada, Mr. Chairman, so, I, I, a motion to approve would be with, uh, those conditions stipulated too.
Okay.
I think we had a comment.
Yeah, I, I just had a question, comment for the board, uh, consideration, if we're gonna ask the applicant, and I don't know how difficult, I have known nothing about this, in terms of, I, I guess they're moving the AC, uh, anyway, but if we're asking them to do the, um, screening, it seems that where it is and how they're proposing with the additional azaleas and shrubs, and then kind of looping, kind of looping them around the buil, the house at the corner, that if we move them, if we move the AC unit back, I don't, I mean, I'm, I'm not designing this, but does that mean then we're asking for them to screen from the front all the way around the side, all the way to the back, or just around the unit itself? Because I think it maybe looks more natural if, and I don't know, you know, if it's closer to the front than if it loops around, maybe?
My understanding, and please feel, if I'm wrong, this is, and this is how I tried to word it, at least when I was trying to recite it, was that the landscape screening for the front of the house would go to the edge of, of the new addition, but also there would be a separate kind of sphere of plant, of screening for the AC unit, it would kind of be treated separately.
But that, I mean, again, this is more for the, the planning here, is that if it was closer to the front, then that landscaping could then be a natural extension of the landscaping in the front, and I don't know if that makes more sense for them, if they would prefer that, and would we be okay if that's something they prefer, to say, i- is our issue more that we want landscapes, we want screening around it, and we don't care where it is necessarily, because if it's screening in the front, or screening more towards the back, it's still on the side, we just want it screened, and does it make more sense, and would the applicant prefer to have that landscaping kind of be a natural extension of the landscaping from the front, or a completely separate kind of batch of landscaping? And do we wanna offer that to the applicant to see what, what they prefer, or do we just wanna dictate it and say we want that, whatever?
Why don't we say something like, in the most aesthetically pleasing way? Based on final plans?
Yeah, as long as it's, as long as it is screened.
Ultimately screened from the street.
Yeah, 'cause I don't think it's.
And the front and the neighbor.
Yeah, 'cause I don't think it's, because honestly, if it's further back or further front, if there's no screening, you still see it from the neighbor, you still see it from the front, no matter where it is, so I, I think whatever is, makes the most aesthetic.
And when it kicks on and you're on your patio, if it's a little closer to the front, it'll sound a lot.
Yeah.
Quieter to you.
Man, I suggest we just leave it kind of open-ended, applicant will provide additional screening for the, the addition and the, uh, AC unit, subject to the review and approval of our planner, um, I think Liz, everybody trusts Liz's discretion, I think she, she can handle this pretty easily.
But I will dictate, um, uh, compliance, final drawing, I'll, I'll indicate.
Okay, all right, well, I'll take that as a further stipulation as well.
Yeah.
Okay, fantastic.
We got that, open it up to discussion, deliberation, yes?
Sure.
Would you like to start the deliberation?
Sure, um, so thank you so much for the very well thought out, um, presentation, and we, and I appreciate you addressing all of the board professionals' concerns, I think that with the stipulations that you made here, and addressing the board professionals' concerns in addition to your testimony regarding the way that you consider potentially, you know, trying to accomplish what the applicant seeks to accomplish with it, you know, making this addition to his home within the zoning, um, isn't really possible, um, and so for all of those reasons, I think that you have met both the, you know, C one in terms of the size of the lot, the location of the house, um, and what you're seeking to do with the house, that I think is absolutely reasonable, um, I think you've also met the C two in terms of, you know, furthering the zoning, the purpose of the zoning, um, ordinance, in that you are, you know, maintaining a property, updating the property, um, making the best use out of it for probably, you know, hopefully generations to come, and, and future neighbors. There's no detriment that I see, I think that your, you know, concessions and plans really kind of mitigate any potential detriment. Obviously, there's no neighbors here, um, objecting to the plan, and so for those reasons, I'm for the application.
Gary?
I concur with everything you said, I think she said it so wonderfully, and I'll just add that it's a, it's a really smart kind of design and plan to make the family space larger and, and enjoy a master bedroom that's larger, um, and not really changing the look of it too much, and, you know, you've really worked with any suggestions that came up to, uh, to make sure that it doesn't, um, you know, damage the feel of the neighborhood or the neighbors, so, you know, I'm in favor of this when we get the vote.
Sir, would you like to?
Sure, uh, I agree that, uh, in regards to the C one variance, uh, you have an exceptional, like many of our.
I agree that in regards to the C1 variance, you have an exceptional, like many of our lots in this town, unfortunately, exceptionally narrow, and that as a, as a result of that, it's an undue hardship for the applicant. I think you've shown that and proven that, and I think that what you're presented to us and the, you know, the plans that you have seem to be, as restating what my fellow board members have stated already, will be a improvement on the existing property and an improvement to the neighborhood, and I appreciate your being here, and thank you.
Thank you.
Wish you good luck. And, yeah, I would be supportive of this application.
Mr. Watts, alternate number one.
Yeah, well, being in the quote-unquote industry, I guess there's always the opportunity for you not to have gone about doing this the right way, bringing it to our attention and getting all these plans done, and you're just kind of doing it yourself, so to speak. So, thank you for doing it that way, and everything looks good, and if I have to vote, I will, yes. Yeah, thanks, sir.
Meredith, would you like to opine?
Well, I so appreciate your coming in here, and I really enjoyed looking at your plans, both online before we even got here today, and being able to see them in person too. And I so appreciate, too, the, the time and attention that you took to, you know, answering our questions and, you know, any concerns that we had about, you know, expanding further eastward, but I appreciated the, you know, time you took to answer all of that, and, and I really think it would be a lovely, a really, you know, nice aesthetic improvement to, you know, to the existing home, you make it larger and for further generations to come too, and it looks great, and, and if I have to vote, I'm for this application as well.
Thank you. Considering this is an existing non-conforming, non-conforming lot, and you're not increasing bedrooms or bathrooms, you're not in excess of the ordinance, the height ordinance, no major changes to the frontage, no major changes to the patio, you've got a growing family with plans to stay, you are making the neighborhood better, so the pros outweigh the cons by far. And I will be in favor of, of this, of the resolution, the application.
I think that's everybody.
That's everybody. So tonight, Mr. Watts will be voting in place of Mr. Aronio, and Ms. Collins will be voting in place of Mr. Flatlin.
Isn't that exciting?
So, and you, and you're both are eligible to make motions, too, to say, so.
Would you like to make a motion to vote?
Oh, so you can kick it off.
I'm going to make a motion to vote.
Motion to approve the application with all the stipulated two conditions?
Yes.
And I'll second that.
There we go.
Right.
Put that down.
Stuffing up to the plate, very nice.
Okay. Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Watts?
Yes.
Ms. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Grosskopf?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations. Good luck to you.
Just leave me the one exhibit.
So, anything else home, man?
Yeah. Well, people?
Which one is easier for you?
We're not done yet.
I have, I folded for the file, so.
What we got to do now?
We have the old business, I think so.
Well, no, secretary of.
She already.
I apologize.
We have item number 10.
Board appointment, is it?
Or, I'm sorry. One on one.
16.
Yeah, we're.
Anybody old, any old business?
That's from December 25.
Any unfinished business?
Any new?
Any new business?
No.
Okay. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We're out.